Inspections and assessments.
I'm led, yeah.
Who did you go through with that?
Oh, you're a led inspector.
State.
Mistake, alright, yes, I haven't gone yet, that's probably one of the only.
It's, they never offer the class, it's like offered once every ten years.
The.
I actually haven't emailed the community health and they never go back to me.
I don't know why they don't offer it.
Yeah, there's two different things, inspector and delet.
Yeah, I just wanna be a determinator.
Yeah.
Inspector.
Long process.
You're a led inspector.
Yeah, yeah, and it's pretty expensive too. That's the only one I haven't done, I should do it.
Well, you'll see, probably, I don't know if you read what she sent out, Dave, uh, it looks like they lowered the requirements on multiple services. Like corners of walls and things like that.
The window sills. Mr. Chairman, I believe we might be on camera if we wanna make announcements that they're picking up the meeting in the middle of it.
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry, uh, welcome to the Board of Health Meeting, we, tonight, we started our meeting, called it to order at five thirty P M. Trying to get through our agenda items quickly this evening for what's on here, which is the reason we're starting early. Uh, we are recessing the Bristol County Aggie School for an Animal Control Seminar. And we will be adjourning there and won't be returning after we recess from here, so everyone knows. Alright, so that was it for the deletting, thanks Todd. Okay, we're all set with the shoebox. If we call out our last meeting, we spoke about, uh, adding a Title V review fee to our existing fees that have been amended. The motion was acted on to approve a fifty dollar Title V, uh, I'm sorry, Title V fee, review fee. And tonight will be our second reading. And our next meeting would be our third meeting before it becomes effective. So, for those that are watching, there will be a fifty dollar Title V review fee added to our, fees that we currently have. And we'll have an effective date for that at our next meeting. So if anybody has any questions or would like to speak to it, please come to our next meeting, which will be the second Wednesday of November. And that's about it with that one. Inspector's reports, what's going on?
Um, I'm not gonna say it's quiet, cause that will just be bad for me. Um, a few things. It's getting cold, so people, now everybody has feral cats and they need somebody to take care of. I'm working throughout town, I have one person coming out and trapping, doing the best I can. Priorities are the people that have little kittens, because usually we can get those adopted out and they don't have to be feral cats for the rest of their lives. So I am working throughout town, it's just getting somebody here, she has other things she needs to do, we're doing the best we can. Feral cats are feral cats, because they can survive in the winter. And if you're really upset because you have feral cats in your yard and we haven't been able to get to them, there are, my friends group has, uh, will buy things so you to, so you can put them in your yard and make a little cat house for them. I am going to be starting my barn inspections probably in the next couple of weeks. Um, and that means anybody that has any kind of animals in their yard, I will chickens, have a couple pigs, and you don't think you're really a barn, I'm still gonna come and inspect. And you may know that I'm there and you may not know that I'm there. I do usually do it during the day, so some people I catch home, some people I don't.
Now, you'll be leaving a notice about the?
I always leave a notice saying that I've been there and that I've come out and inspected. If there is a problem, I will put another, I will leave a violation notice also and give you how long you need to fix that violation and I'll come back out and inspect.
Isn't that normally have a new fee of, is it ten dollars?
Yes, we have a ten dollar barn permit fee at this point.
Okay, so you'll be notifying that they need to get the barn permit also?
Yes, yes.
Or farm permit or whatever.
Farm permit, whatever you wanna call it.
This is, uh, this is not something we have started, it's something the state, once again, has put on the cities and towns. Another unfended, unfended mandate by the state, so, um, we have to do our due diligence and, uh, do what's required by the state, so. Just for notification purposes, you will, if you have animals, any kind of farm animals, you'll be receiving a notice that it had been inspected and you must come and get a fit, uh, permit for farm animals, but that's what the state wants us to do, so. Anything else?
No, I think that's it.
How was your week?
Um, not too bad, we had a bunch of people come in, um, had some questions, I had a couple meetings set up with a couple different, um, homeowners. About stuff, you see the betterment one there and, um, we processed that this week, um, between Roz and I, we got all that taken care of and, and that. So that, that was kinda that and the inspection that we did. That was pretty much the bulk of the week, uh, there's a lot of perk applications coming into the office, so.
And get a lot of experience, so.
Yeah.
He, not you.
Yeah.
You have enough.
But otherwise, everything seems to be going good, Roz is spectacular, she really keeps things moving along well.
Okay.
She does a good job. How did we make out with the, uh, over the weekend, that, uh, Bristol Aggie?
Oh, right, um, so the event was eleven to five, I got there at ten A M. and there were already two hundred cars in the parking lot.
Yeah, it was busy, I drove by a few times.
Wow, man, I'm busy.
Yeah, um, so there were three vendors that had signed up.
Yeah.
Um, three non-B A vendors had signed up, I could only find two of them. And that was fine, but there were several other vendors that were B A. But one was like the B A scholarship or the B, um, like the Booster Club, whatever. But I don't think it was actually Bristol Aggie people, I think it was like, like the P T O kinda thing as opposed to the, you know?
Yeah, like the friends at the library.
Yeah, so.
And what did they have, baked goods and stuff?
No, one was fried dough, one was strawberry shortcake. And I think that might have been it, cause the caramel pie, oh, and hot dogs, and they were doing hot dogs, was the third one.
But you didn't have any extra vendors from what you had permitted?
But again, they all said they were under the B A permit. And this is, this was the thing, I went and inspected them anyway.
Okay.
And, um, honestly, it was, um, hairnets was the only thing missing, but they went right into the kitchen, got the hairnets and everybody put the hairnets on. But the, the stations are clean, everybody's wearing gloves and, and all that. But I'm more, I don't know if they should have been under the B A permit, if they should have been a separate permit.
We could see next year, moving forward, if they can get us a list of who they have.
That's what I was thinking.
And then we can at least cross-reference and make sure.
Right, and maybe that's it, so I know what's coming.
Yeah, yeah, cause you wanna be able to.
And then, and everybody I talked to said, well, after what happened last year, we got that notice and all that, I'm like, well, then why don't you have a hairnet? Right, so, um, it was, it was fine and everybody was as cooperative as can be. Um, but I was just, and, but they were spread out and I couldn't find that third one and I ran into that.
And then I saw it, cause they're all there.
And I'm like, if you find them, call me, and I never heard from them.
There's some on this side, there's always some near the school as well.
Yep, I mean, uh, the event was fine and everybody was great, but it was a beautiful day. But, um, yeah, it was just the idea of, alright, I didn't know if there's other people around, I went into the, the main kitchen and just checked them out, as long as I was checking everybody else, I figured I'd check them out and they were spot on.
Yeah, they do a good job.
So I, I didn't, I didn't need to, you know, give anybody any ones or twos, everybody was zeros, but, um, it was, it was a beautiful day for it, so, I didn't go back on Sunday, so.
Did you do anything in between meetings?
No.
Yep.
No, just, I just looked at those regs again, but, uh, that, um.
They had no inspections at least.
They had no inspections either.
Yeah, okay, well.
And then we, we have the other ones full, there's a break a lot, these schedules coming up.
Todd has been able to give us more time as he, uh, transitions into this, so.
It's, it's, it's ramping up.
He's, he's keeping up pretty good.
But then you throw in these little side trips of, let's do a betterment, you know, thing and whatever, so.
Uh, you know what, thank you for pitching in that.
Oh, but it's not that, it was the idea of, alright, well, instead of going and doing this, so now I'm doing that, so whatever, it's, it's just about balancing your time, that's all, so.
Oh, we also ended up getting, and I wanna send out a thank you to Tom Madures down the, uh, I appreciate station for creating our I D badges. Uh, for Todd Pilling and myself, do you have one as Animal Control?
No, but now that you say that, uh, the chief at the next department head meeting is gonna bring it up to the selectmen, because he's got somebody in Lakeville that does it really cheap and he's got firefighters, I mean, police officers and needed stuff, he was gonna offer it to anybody in town, but no, I do not have that.
Oh, good, yeah, if you stop by and, whenever Tom Madures is there, takes your picture, you come back later or the next.
Yeah, he says like forty-five minutes and, um.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's, it's good.
Got the type of field you have, so, and you can hang it on a linear or keep it in your pocket. I guess you can make a badge, part of it, and, and.
It's greatly appreciated, another example of departments working together within town, so. And I have my badge when I drive by a house, it's thrown a sofa out there, it's been out there for seven days and perhaps I can finally get to speak to the person, but, uh, yeah, which leads me to the fact about putting furniture out on the side of the road. Uh, as I mentioned before, town does not have a mechanism to pick up large bulky items, other than on bulky item day, which normally happens once a year. I can understand leaving it out there for three or four days, uh, you know, hoping somebody will pick it up, uh, one day. But I think anything more than seven days is excessive and we will be looking for that. The transfer station's open Tuesday and Saturday, so it's, uh, now we'll cut, cut some slack when we first see it out there, but after a few snowstorms and some rain, I think it's time that you can figure nobody's gonna take it. So, um, please try to dispose of it, they do become an eyesore. And we get phone calls, complaints of such, so uh, try to work with us and, and keep tight and clean, so. Is there any correspondence? I don't know. I think we probably did it.
Yeah, I don't believe there was any.
I think we just posted on the book, I don't.
There's no public, so we won't have any public.
The only other relevant announcement is the hazardous waste day.
Oh, yeah.
Am I not here?
Hazardous waste day?
It's not even on the back, what were the announcements?
Oh, alright, let's read it.
It's not there.
Anybody wanna read it? No? Okay, announcements, trash bags, shops' disposal containers and recycling stickers are all for sale at the Board of Selectmen's office. Call five zero eight six six nine six four three one for more information. Actually, I read something on Facebook about, uh, shops disposal, uh, they do accept them. I forget the price, I think it's three fifty for, do you remember three fifty a gallon and six dollars for a two gallon or something like that? Uh, whatever the cost is, uh, once the container's full, you can bring it back to Town Hall. So there is a place to return it to. There is a flu clinic on October twenty-sixth, that's today.
Tomorrow.
Tomorrow.
Tomorrow, hosted by the Dyton Council on Aging and the Law Level of Town Hall from twelve o'clock P M. to two o'clock P M. Please bring your insurance cards, you must be eighteen or older. If you have any questions, please contact Rite Aid at five zero eight six seven six three three seven zero. Well, that's the one that, uh, Mark, the guy I spoke with about doing the town, so. There will be a free Veterans Breakfast on November eleventh at nine A M. It will be held at Father's House Family Church, two oh seven Main Street, Dyton. If you need a ride or to R S V P, please contact Veteran Agent Donald Hershey, five zero eight six six nine four five two four. And also on Veterans Day, there'll be a dedication ceremony for the Frank G. Costa Memorial Park, held on November eleventh, two thousand seventeen, at eleven thirty A M. at the park, for those that knew Frank, he was a selectman for many years, plus involved with many other committees and boards, he served for many, many years at the town of Dyton. Uh, Dy- Dyton Lion's Food Bank Distribution will be held on November eighteenth, Law Level of Town Hall from eight thirty to ten. And the Lights On Ceremony will be held on Saturday, November twenty-fifth. Volunteers and donations are still needed. Contact Sue Madures at five oh eight six six nine six four three one, option three, if you're willing to help. There's nothing in there on hazardous waste, huh?
No.
November fourth.
Yeah, Hazardous Waste Day is November fourth, nine A M. to two P M. This is a free event, I, I say free, there is no charge for any vehicles, however, depending, there are some items that is a fee attached to, such as motor oil or propane tanks. Uh, I don't know if there's other items that could be, but please read the flyer. Uh, that is the only, if you don't bring those, then there'll be no charge at all for coming there, so. And disposing of your material, the, uh, the flyer is on, I believe, on the town website, it's been on Facebook, it's, it's been all over the place, so I'm sure you'll be able to find it somewhere if, if you're looking, uh, for what or whatnot to bring. Um, I just wanna, I know you guys, I, I sent it out and I forgot to attach it, then I attached it later.
Yeah, you did, yeah.
Yeah, I got it.
Okay, you got one, you got one.
I got one. Uh, before you get into that, can I just ask, did anybody come up with any more comments for Title V regulation changes? Did you mark anything up that can add it to the, not yet, okay, just figure it out before I forget it?
Okay, have you both read it?
Yeah.
Um, I did this this morning. I, I think it will be helpful to the town to understand what we've done and why we've done it and how the Board of Health was put together. And I'll be open about it, the only thing I feel that I, I might be able to take off, um, that I thought about taking, uh, uh, leaving it on, I don't know, give me your thoughts. I have a a few comments about the warrant, such as Articles twelve and thirteen have been previously prepared for the twenty seventeen Annual Town Meeting, but were removed or reduced at the request of the Board of Selectmen for addition to a future meeting, which is why it's on tomorrow's meeting. And Article fifteen is a transfer of funds to help fund the health agent account. If all articles are approved, the total cost to the town uh, would be twenty-six thousand, six hundred seventy-one dollars and sixty cents. Is that enough information, too much information? Leave it on, might as well be.
Yeah, I mean, it covers everything related to this, yeah.
I just had a quick question, it says a full-time thirty-five hour a week position, is that that clerical?
Well.
That's what it originally was, and now you have thirty hours and twenty-five hours?
Yeah, what ended up happening, and I'll explain it tomorrow night. When the committee came in with their recommendations, we recommended a thirty-five hour a week, uh, full-time office worker, office clerk.
And we were gonna evaluate the needs for a health agent, and whether it be full-time or part-time.
And we all felt that it was probably more important to make the most, um, of those hours utilizing an administration. The Board of Selectmen said, like, we're gonna have to fund a health agent and a clerical person with those hours of thirty-five. So the thought I had during, going in, and I think we talked about this, I don't remember, that we would go with thirty hours in administration and save five a week for a health agent, which would probably be a far cry from what we really need. Uh, but as things worked out with, uh, our clerk agent retiring, with you coming on this board and you were the food inspector, we chose to hire after some, and looking at the budget, some consideration of what we could do with the budget, we had felt that there were, there was sufficient funds in those vacated departments such as the clerk agent, the food inspector, and we were very fortunate to get someone that can review plans.
That's right, cause we took away from that.
So, the plan review factor was sixteen thousand a year. So I was able to pull twelve thousand, five hundred dollars from that account and, and we funded a twenty-five hour a week health agent position at no additional cost to the town, which I think we're still saving money.
And you probably, you probably say, it's a busy office.
It is a very busy office, um, either the phone or people coming in the door, it's steady. We are always, if Roz and I are trying to get into something, we're always being interrupted. Um, but it's amazing how many people come through, and it seems like it's mostly Board of Health, but there are still some zoning things that come through, but, yeah.
And there's so many moving parts to Board of Health, where people really don't understand.
And that's not me do, going out and doing inspections in perk tests, that's just when I'm here, that it's busy, so.
With everything, the size of the town, especially considering the increase in development in the town.
Jim said, I think there was like sixty building permits of new construction like three years ago, then seventy, and this year's eighty already, so.
This should have happened ten years ago, so we're just trying to get up with the times. And as far as having you as a health agent, um, everything functions much better when you have one person doing everything instead of one person doing food, one person doing perks, and then you have a health director working five hours a week, it's, if that one person's doing everything, they have a lot more vested into the department, where I think everything runs a lot smoother.
Well, I think it works for perks, cause the person doing the perks then does the plan review, then does the open hall inspection and sign off instead of three different people.
You know everything that's going on from start to finish.
Yep.
On everything, it's just, it's far superior and it's, it's with the times, um, you know, that's where the town needs to be going.
So, and things have changed so much over the years, even when I got on the Board, second Board of Health in two thousand and six. And even at that time, we didn't have much of a Board of Health to speak of, uh, the old, the Board of Health has always been understaffed and underfunded, as far as I'm concerned, I, I think you would agree.
Absolutely.
And I say it, but I, I think we're about thirty years behind of, uh, you know, but we're getting there, and, um, one of the things I mentioned was that, um, I don't think we can only, I think we have to meet twice a month, there, there's so much going on.
There's a lot more that needed to be done administratively on the board end side of things with regulations and, and even the fees and like how long it took us just to get through the fees to
Yeah, yeah.
get things in line and brought up to current date, um, you know, and now the regulations and it's not just ethically, I mean, it's everything. It, it takes a lot of time and I think meeting twice a month, it's, it's necessary.
But in theory.
For an extended time, in a couple of years, as things become more streamlined and smooth and, and every, you know, all the regulations are squared away and, you know, I mean, having a health agent's a whole new thing for the town. Once all that becomes normal and everything's functioning the way it should be, I think then we could probably go down to once a month, but.
Or the meetings would be shorter.
Or both, yeah.
Yeah.
Right now, twice a month is perfectly fine.
I think.
It's working out.
I think to only meet once a month now, mm, it would take forever to get anything done, it's, it's definitely necessary.
Especially since I need guidance from the board on what you want me to be doing, and obviously, I can't just ask one of you as well to do it.
There's a lot of new things and, and a lot of things that, that are being brought up to speed and up to par. And it, it takes time and it takes us to be able to meet. And, you know, it's not something that I can come in and sit down with Roz for an hour and then Tom can, it's things that we need to discuss collectively that have to be done in a meeting, so to meet twice a month is, is very fair to say, and our meeting is, excuse me, generally, you know, about two, two to three hours apiece. And we could certainly probably even go longer than that, you know, but.
There's midnights.
Couple hours, yeah, definitely.
Yep, so, and I, I think it's necessary and I mean, the, the, the meetings go by very quick, at least on, on this end, this side of the table.
I feel like they run quick.
So.
Thank you for preparing this, it's really good.
Yeah, I mean, I did the best I could, I, I felt, uh, I thought it would be magnificent, but.
I think it covers everything.
It does.
Wow.
I mean, there's a whole lot of things, I could have wrote three pages if I wanted to, but.
Yeah, but you go on too long and people are like, they're stopped.
Yeah, I, I mean, I think it gets to the point and.
So are you planning on reading this aloud?
If I'm permitted to read it, yes. There's a portion of the town meeting in the beginning that they ask for town reports. And, uh, if he does not mention Board of Health report, I will just say, point of personal privilege. And I'll say, I have a report to read, to present to the town's people, so, um.
It is a board and a department and a very important board and department, so it'll be.
Yeah, actually, it was Nancy's idea, Selectman Gulat's idea that I should probably write a report.
And it was the town's people that voted to decide to divide or, or split up the Selectmen through the Board of Health, so at least we call back to them what we're doing.
And so, so we. You were aware, I, I did reach out to one of the Selectmen today and, um, he said that this, that the Selectmen are in favor of all of our articles.
Yeah, they're on board and everything, so I'm not, um, you know, granted.
Clarify it and share that.
I think we can all agree that some of these things, um, perhaps should have been on an annual town meeting, uh, when we were looking for salary increases and so forth, but circumstances in many departments this year led, led us to put everything on the, uh, fall special. And especially since we were asked to take them off and wait for a future meeting, so here we are, we're, we're coming in with them, I think it's important, we get, we get moving and get this Board of Health up to the, as I put in my statement, twenty-first century, so.
I think we've done a lot in the last six months to get it heading in that direction.
We're making progress.
Much work to be done, but.
Well, we'll see what happens.
We'll steam ahead and forward, so it's good.
Yeah, you can't go tomorrow night, right?
Right.
Yeah.
You'll come around.
You're not gonna.
Um, I was gonna ask the board, I was thinking about being there, cause I think it's kind of important, um, for, for the entire department.
Well, that's up to you.
You have to sit on the other side.
Yeah, you have to sit in a longer area.
I need a guest pass, right, yeah.
And I, and I think that that there's something that pertains to you that you would like to speak to.
Well, I saw there were fifty-five articles tomorrow night.
Yes, yeah, it's.
Fifty-one.
The hot button is number fifty-one.
A lot, a lot of the initial articles, I think, will go very quick, cause it's a lot of contractual with the unions and things like that.
Actually, this meeting will probably have more people than the last, for the last five years of annual meetings. So what time does it start?
Seven.
Seven.
We usually get a hundred and ten people? Maybe, a hundred and fifty, depending on it, but.
Yeah, a month or a couple years ago, the town administrator, that, that was a pretty heavy.
Yeah, yeah.
So fifty-one is a hot button right now.
And, and in the annual town meeting, when we put Leech Laure on there?
That will be well, that will be well attended.
That'll draw some people.
I'll get that one.
And then, yeah, what was the Hobbit Mass I was looking for, oh, that took like an hour.
Yep.
Oh, yes.
You're gonna find, I think there's gonna be a lot of discussion on fifty-one.
Alright, we're gonna talk about something here next meeting, but we, we just got a couple of minutes.
If you, if you do need something tomorrow, can you call, and we'll be looking around, just have a family obligation that I need to
Um, uh.
sort through first, so.
I have, uh, pretty much prepared for, you know, the article's pretty straightforward, so, I mean, we have documentation for everything, so.
And for the non-criminal, we're squared away, you had said we're squared away with that one, removing the tobacco pot. So Maryland Edge will still be able to do her.
That article has nothing to do with Maryland Edge anymore.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, that's what it, yeah, it needs to be that way.
Okay, what do you know about eight hundred Sutter Street with the tight tank?
I don't have any tight tanks. Oh, I, no, actually, I shouldn't say that, though, it's, uh.
I don't want it with this cold, but I happen to be.
It's, uh, from my understanding, on a previous meeting from the, it was during the Board of Health Selectmen, Selectmen's Office, um, there was supposed to be a, an inspection done there regarding that, that tank.
I know an inspection was done on the main home, uh, on the inside.
I do you matter of difference, I'm right.
And on that inspection, they discovered a tight tank on the property for the, uh, apartment that was built over the garage. The Title V was supposed to be done both for the house and for the apartment above the garage. And from what I can see, there was no fallout. No.
I know there wasn't.
So, yeah, if you, if you look back in the, if you look back at the meeting, m- meeting minutes.
I got them.
Uh, yeah, so, um, I think, um, Jim Agia was there and he recommended a.
Jim Agia. Title V.
Title V, and that's probably where it, it stopped right there, yeah.
The Board of Select, the Board of Selectmen at the time said they were going to follow through.
What was the date of that meeting?
Was that last year?
Yeah.
Were you there?
No, how was the tight tank put in with no alarm?
Well, I think it was a tight tank thing with no, uh, no permit.
No permit, but you know, you know who the property belongs to?
I don't think.
It was put in without a permit. No permit for the construction either above the garage.
That was put in, obviously.
Okay, so that's why that was all done that way, but when we were out there for other reasons, things have been brought to light in person.
So do we need to send them a letter saying, is it?
Yeah, I think we just have to follow up on that, actually, I think.
I mean.
Yeah, we're gonna.
We have, we have the right to order a Title V inspection, just because, so.
It was supposed to be done back then, but, but.
Well, they, it's, it's, it was, if this was all put in new, there should be some kind of permit for it, and you can get a permit for a tight tank, it, it is possible, so.
Doesn't, and it doesn't even have to go to the state anymore, it's all done locally, so.
It's not, it's not new.
Right, it's all here, so it's not.
It, it's not new.
I'm not a big fan of tight tanks, I'd rather modify a tight tank, but, um, in any event, right, we need to know what's there and whether or not it's being pumped regularly. So we, if it's a tight tank, we should be getting pumping records, so.
It's very legally.
It's very legally.
Yeah, but it still should be pumping out.
Just, just, I know, just as an FYI, and this is all I'm gonna say, if any of you go, take place with me. Do not try to step on that property without a police officer with you. And you're better off going through the man that owns the property than the woman that's on the property.
We're probably going to wind up sending certified letter.
She won't pick it up.
Yeah, but we have to do our.
I know, but I'm just saying.
Well, we'll, we'll have it delivered.
We can pretty much, yeah, indicate during this meeting that, um, it was voted to, uh, have a, have a.
That's just so, just the warning.
What was the date of that meeting for the men?
Wednesday, June twenty-second, in two thousand sixteen.
Yes.
Now, the problem I'm having here, and I'm gonna ask Jim Agia to come, is after ten years, if it's there illegally, it stays.
I think it's six years.
However, I know it hasn't been there ten years.
May have been there six. It may have been there six, I don't know how long it's been living up there.
Um, close.
Yeah, probably.
But we, um, it was either two thousand and seven or two thousand and eight, I think. But, um.
Yeah, we just follow this.
Yeah, that's all.
Voted unanimously to proceed with Building Commissioner Agia's recommendation to have the higher Title V inspector prepare two reports, a report on the septic system for the house and a report on the tight tank system.
And we haven't received either one of those. We can check the pumping records, and if we get nothing, then we can send them a certified and regular mail saying.
Yeah.
Yeah, I've, I've met the Astralis today if there was pumping records.
And same as with the other one we did last meeting, is you have a certain amount of time until you have to do something, which I don't think we've seen anything on that other letter, so.
And I, I, if I recall correctly, during the meeting, they said they would actually do it, they were like, oh, we'll do it.
Yeah, well, solid, that's what it says there.
And they said, they would do a.
Maybe they did it and they just never submitted it to us.
Yeah.
You know, the inspector gave it to them and then they didn't do anything with it.
Shame on the inspector.
The inspector should have sent it to us.
I said, I said maybe, I'm, I'm not trying to, I, I don't know these people, I don't know the, the situation, so I'm not trying to cast aspersions or any, it's, you know, maybe, maybe it was just lost in the shop.
Once again, within thirty days, right?
Sixty, they changed it to sixty, we're now for Title Fives, yeah.
Upon them.
Sixty days.
Unless local requires us.
So, we don't have a local right for that, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, so we won't have that, eh?
No.
Well, it's it, I can write it down in the notes for the thing.
Yeah, put it down in the notes.
We can talk about it, because it's all for a later discussion.
Yeah. I re- I require fifteen days postmarked, so they can mail in as long as it's postmarked, but in fifteen days, the inspection, but. I'm not, I mean, that fifteen days is a little excessive, but if it's going, if it went to sixty, then I think we should keep it at thirty.
Three hours.
Uh, how about a motion to recess to, uh, Bristol County Agricultural School?
Make the motion.
Second.
Motion vain, seconded, uh, in further discussion. Seeing none, all's in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, let's go to school. Thanks, Cable, we're all set. Um, we won't be coming back here, we'll be adjourning at, uh, the Aggie School.
Could you type that?
Thanks very much.
No, I'm gonna do it all once.